Well, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock in Gardner, Kansas. I'm going to call the city council meeting to order. Everybody would like to stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
Good evening to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do certainly appreciate the full house this evening. Clint Barney, who's new on our utility advisory commission, came up and asked all of us to please speak into our microphones because I believe he said artillery ears.
Yeah, cool.
Okay. So, we're going to try and do a better job of that this evening. But thank you all for coming this evening. And, you know, you're welcome to all these council meetings. And we always like to see a full house. So feel free to come back at any time. The first item, the first presentation item, we're going to start the presentations this evening, is a presentation and discussion of the compensation study. During the 2015 budget process, the governing body directed staff to complete a compensation study. The 2015 budget includes $230,000 set aside for salary adjustments. The city solicited proposals from qualified vendors and conducted interviews. And we selected Gallagher Benefit Services to complete the compensation study. And I'm going to invite Gail Meriwether from Gallagher Benefit Services to come forward and present an overview of the compensation study. Gail, good evening to you.
Good evening.
And yeah, if you could take a minute and tell us a little bit about yourself before we get started.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I should stay turned this way or actually turn around because I understand there's a big crowd because everybody's interested in the comp study.
Ah, the microphone's in front of you. But you're going to have to face this way.
So then, for starters, my name is Gail Meriwether. I've been a consultant in the Kansas City area for about 20 years. My area of expertise is human resources, in particular, compensation, performance management, organization development, and employment law. I do a lot of compensation studies. Right now, I'm working on the state of Rhode Island, Detroit, Michigan, the city itself, Olahtha. Finished a project for Hutchinson, Kansas, working with KCAT, Kansas City Area Transportation Authority. So, I'm really busy with municipality work. And I'm pleased that we've had the opportunity to also do this work for Gardner, Kansas. Our firm, Gallagher Benefit Services, has been around for about 80 years. Their area of expertise is employment-related property risk kinds of insurance as well as health benefits. In 2001, Gallagher purchased my firm, along with my two partners, as the very first human resources consulting practice. They wanted to compete with Aon, Mercer, the other consulting practices who also offered human resources services. So, in a nutshell, that's me.
Clint, thanks.
And now, if you don't mind, we'll dive right into the compensation study. And I think, yes, the clicker will work for me. Our objective through this process was really to identify and understand internal equity to make sure that the structure that we developed for the city of Gardner was also externally competitive with those entities to which you recruit and lose employees. We also wanted a system that would be easy to administer. In order to thoroughly understand the positions here at Gardner, we reviewed the job descriptions, org charts, but probably one of the most important processes was that we had time and we took the time to interview each of the directors. And they were individual interviews where we had the opportunity to understand from them personally what issues they were facing within their department, what kinds of issues or concerns that their employees had. So, we asked a series of questions as to, what jobs are you losing? What jobs are difficult to fill? Who are you competing with, with certain talent, et cetera? So, it gave us an even better feel of the city and its philosophy. After that, we went back to conduct a market analysis. In so doing, we referenced a number of published surveys. We looked at the Bureau of Labor Statistics for the state of Kansas. We also looked at comp data, state of Kansas as well. Kansas Wage Survey, the Kansas City Metropolitan Area, in particular, Johnson County and Kansas City. We also took a look at the Mid-America Regional Council. That's an important survey to me because for the past 15 to 16 years, I have provided for that survey private sector data for those public sector jobs to ensure that as we look at what the market might be, we understand that we can also lose certain jobs to the private sector, in particular, IT jobs, HR jobs, et cetera. We also referenced the Towers Watson Compensation Theory, in particular, management and supervisory report, office support, professional administrative, professional specialized, technical skill report. And again, for those jobs that you could lose to the private sector, we looked at not-for-profit governmental entities as well as the private sector to gain data for those positions. We also referenced Wage Wizard. You all might know Wage Wizard by salary.com. Part of the reason we always look at that is because, for the most part, employees will look. They have the opportunity to get a free report. And we buy the services a little bit more for us. Let me also say, because I got a lot of questions around the Mid-America Regional Council, just who did we compare the city of Gardner to? And I will say to you, it really depended on the job. So then, did we use Kansas City for certain jobs? Did we use Johnson County, Jackson County, Overland Park? There are jobs that you will lose, i.e. police department, fire, some public works jobs that are comparable throughout the metropolitan area. When it comes to those director-level positions, no. We don't necessarily make comparisons to Johnson County or Jackson County or the city of Kansas City because the span of control and the complexity of the jobs don't necessarily compare well with the city of Gardner. So, with that, oh. So then, after we've gathered all of the market data, this is not a part of my slide, but let me just approach the council so that you can follow me a little closer. What we have going around for the council is simply what we are proposing as the salary ranges. You will note there, we've got the current ranges and we've got the ranges that we are proposing. When you take a look at your current ranges and look at those midpoint progressions, you will see that it lacks symmetry. You might have one midpoint, 7% from the others, another one maybe 40%. That kind of lends itself to an awkward kind of a schedule. It's going to be difficult to then determine which level, the next level of progression might go in. And so, if you'll see what we're proposing, my midpoint progressions, I think, are a consistent 14%. You'll also notice when it comes to the width, the spread from minimum to maximum, the current system that you're using now has a 45% range spread. What we typically see in the marketplace is a 50% range spread. So, we've just been consistent throughout the entire piece of work and used a 50% range spread. And that's simple. It's 20% on either side. So, after we developed the structure that's in front of you, we called back to the city and asked if we could have each employee's name, their job title, and their current base pay. And then, we slotted each employee back in the range that corresponded with their job description. Then, we ran what we like to call comp ratio. It's simple. It's a comparison of the employee's actual salary to the midpoint of the range. Because the job that they actually hold determined which range they would go back in. And then, we ran those numbers to understand what your overall comp ratio is. And so, on average, for the city of Gardner, you've got about a 93% comp ratio. So, the average group of employees are paid at about 93% of the market midpoint. Typically, that's about right. Our biggest concern are those employees who would be paid less than 80% of the marketplace, which means they are paid below the minimum of the range that we have slotted them back in. You do have a few employees who are paid below the minimum of the range. I think it's only about three or four. And the total to bring them up to the minimum of the range is about $4,000. Now, while the average is 93%, there were a number of employees whose comp ratios were less than 93%. So then, we took a look at that group of employees who had comp ratios that were 90% or below. And there's a significant number of those. And in order to bring them up to about that 90% comp ratio, it would cost you about $171,000. Here's a caveat. We don't recommend that you just do that in one fell swoop. We absolutely recommend that you take a look at performance, length of service, and tie those kinds of pieces of data to how you make a decision to bring those employees up towards that 90%. We also suggest that you do it over a period of time. That it's not necessarily done in one fell swoop. So, with that, we've also had a conversation with the city about a performance management system that would be fair and consistent. So, we've developed a salary increase matrix that would absolutely tie performance to the compensation structure. When I said "we have developed," we developed the salary increase matrix. We've spent time with the directors and with the direct reports of each of those directors to get input on a performance management system. One that would identify job objectives and standards of performance be, this is why I hired you. And the other portion of it would be, this is the culture of our organization, whether it's teamwork, collaboration, et cetera. So, we've gone through that exercise. Any questions?
I have a question. So, can you talk a little bit about what the employees that are kind of in that 90% comp ratio, what levels do those mainly fall in?
It's across the board. It is absolutely across the board. So, it isn't as if you've got a lot at those lower levels or at the mid. It is absolutely across the board. And if I'm not mistaken, it's probably about 45 or 50 employees.
Can you see what's like yours?
Don't listen, Mr. Daly.
Please, we do.
Sure. And I don't believe that you have any employees who are paid above the maximum of the range. If you do, it's only by maybe $30 or $40. And forgive me for not knowing definitively, but I've got Hutchinson, Ada, and everybody else running through my head since we're finishing all of these projects at the same time. Any other questions? Because this is my very last slide.
So, what are next steps for us as far as implementation of the findings of this? And how do we tie it to the performance of the employees? So that we're...
You talked about the 90% of comp ratio kind of being this target. But could we also, based on time and service experience, have people that should really be paid more than that 90%?
Let me tell you what we tried to do as it relates to levels of complexity. And this is one of the things that I discussed in depth with my directors. If they had a position, let's just say, an accountant, and it was just one job description that said "an accountant," I brought them back the data, especially from Towers Watson, that identified accountants 1, 2, 3s, and 4s. So, it gave me the opportunity, when we initially brought the data back, to say, hopefully, there's not a Peggy in the room. So, Peggy's pay was substantially above or below. And we had targeted, let's say, an accountant 3. My question then to my directors was, tell me what's going on with Peggy's job? What did I miss? And so, then, that's where we've gotten the opportunity to go back and understand, you know, Peggy was probably new or Peggy had more tenure than we've already addressed where that level of complexity would be. So, I'm thinking now, and my directors are familiar faces, two of them at least are in the room, that we, there's three because I saw another one walk in, but I'm thinking that we've got the employees kind of where we believe they are. And so, even with placing them where we believe they are, we still are around this $171,000.
How much consideration was made as you were reviewing each of these that internally, just from Gardner's perspective, that employees were aligned with the proper salary tier based on their qualifications and their experience for the particular position?
That's, now, let me just say, Mr. Freeman, that was a question that I could not answer initially because all I was dealing with was job description. And so, after I placed everybody where we believe that they should be from the job description, then that's when I solicited and got answers to the question that you just posed from the directors that I had the opportunity to spend time with. I will give you an example. Probably not. But I'll give you an example. There was a position that I believe that the position could possibly have been a purchasing agent. But because the job did not require a degree, because of the nature of how that job functioned within the purchasing department, it's more like a purchasing generalist. So, we've kind of already gone through to whittle our way through, this really is what this job is. Now, let me also say, that doesn't mean that we eliminated the market data that we'd already provided for that job. That data is still there. So, there's what we like to call a level of complexity guide. So, the city has back more data than I think they will ever need. But what we wanted to make sure of is, as the city grows, as employees or the directors recognize that they need a different skill set, one that offers more complexity, those jobs are currently in the structure. And I did that because if I get a phone call two years from now that says, "Gail, we'd like for you to take a look at this particular job," more than likely, I'm going to be looking at surveys that are going to be newer than when we finish this work. Which I should also say, the structure that we've developed, the expectation is that it will be adjusted on an annual basis. So, it's not like I did it this year and then it sits around and it stays for the next five years. I will be talking to Matt or whomever to say, you need to adjust each of the salary ranges by this amount according to the market. That's some of the data that I provide for Mark as well.
Can you talk a little bit about, and I don't know if this is... Cheryl, let us know if there's a different plan for this when Chris asked about follow-up steps. But the performance measurements and the analysis and things that you've helped put together and where that stands and how it's going to be presented, at the very least.
May I? What we've done as it relates to performance management, we asked, I kind of chatted a little bit with the directors initially in our interviews about performance management. How often do you do it? How many employees do you have? How many direct employees? What are your thoughts? Is pay tied to performance? Should it be? And then, with that next level, I spoke to them about, if you had an ideal system, how many ratings would it be? Here's a universe of core competencies. And I will say, that universe of core competencies comes from the universe that we typically use from municipalities. And so, they selected and they did it independently. So, it wasn't a group discussion so that they could say... Because sometimes we get people who will, you know, take over the conversation and some of my other folks won't have time to talk. So, they did it independently. They filled out the forms and gave them back to me. And I did the math and said, these are basically your core competencies. Now, the core competencies for the leadership group, we developed those. They include collaboration, executing, business judgment, ethics and values, exactly what we expect from the leadership. And so, we've kind of finished the framework. I've brought it back for Cheryl to take a look at it, see what questions she has. And then, we'll bring it back to the directors. And I will bring it back again individually for them to kind of take a look at what we've gotten and then give me their feedback. And then, we'll go from there. What's important is that we will ask, or the system currently asks, what are those major three to four outcomes of the job? Not getting into task, but what are you responsible for? I don't want eight. I really don't want seven. I want to know the major outcomes. Because sometimes we get bogged down in the task and I want them to focus on the major outcomes. It won't cover every aspect of the job, but those pieces that are crucial to ensure that we maintain the budgets that we need to maintain. And I should also say the giveaway, because I've been doing it for so long, I kind of already have a ton of job objectives and standards of performance for almost, for every job that a municipality will have. Because simultaneously, I'm doing the exact same thing for the city of Ada. And so, then, it gives Gardner the opportunity to kind of look at my prototype and say, yeah, this is in our job. This is not, we'd like to add this or we'd like to add that. So, we're basically done. It's just a matter of making sure that it's checked. And then, after we've done that and it's absolutely approved, then we, then my role is to sit with all of the employees then to say, this is a structure that we have. And then, this is what we do going forward. And I may have to spend a little bit more time with my directors and those folks who actually conduct reviews to help them understand what it is they really need to be after when they go through this process. Because I'm totally switching them around. Rather than a long conversation at the end of the review period, I am asking them to have a conversation with the employees at the start of the review period to tell them what is expected of their job. And it's strictly a function of the job, not the employees in the job. So, if I've got seven account clerks, the core responsibilities are going to be consistent for those seven. It's like hurdles. This is all about the job. How well you perform then is kind of where we want to land and really understand.
I've got one final question. I apologize for backtracking like this.
No problem.
But I believe you mentioned our bottom threshold was about 80%?
Let me say...
Comparison. I wanted to know what actually our true bottom comparison level was, where we bottomed out at.
Let me say, when we say 80%, what we like to do is a 50% range spread.
Right.
So, it's 20% on either side. The reason we like to do that is because a few years back, the OFCCP decided that if pay was within two standard deviations, then it was fair. And that's about a 50% range spread. Now, I'll go on to say, they've changed their mind. So, now, they're all over the place as to what they believe is fair. So, when we develop a structure, what we want to make sure of is that it meets those legal ramifications. So, if my employees are paid within the range that we've identified for them, then we say pay is fair. So, that's kind of why we have that 50% bottom with 20% on either side. So, with that, you've got maybe three or four employees and it's not a lie because the total is $4,000, which is less than a quarter of a half a percent of your entire salary budget. But let me also say, though they are paid below the minimum of the range, we are still not recommending that you just hand over $4,000. I absolutely believe that given increases, whatever it should be, should be tied to performance.
Can I ask your opinion just on the top pay? You know, we kind of debated. If somebody's at the top of the pay structure, what is your opinion on how they should be handled?
If they're at the top of the pay structure and we've got a legitimate performance management system, which we, the city of Gardner, will have as soon as I'm done, what we recommend, let's say, hopefully, there's not a Danny in the room. So, uh-oh, there must be. I won't even look back.
I'm not sure he works for the city.
Okay, good. He does not work for the city, but now he does. So, Danny is paid above. And let's say Danny has probably been doing this job for about 26, 27 years. He does an excellent job. But most importantly, we've identified job objectives with standards of performance. We still have to do Danny's review, though he's paid above the maximum of the range. So, when we conduct his review, let's then say he is an exceptional performer. Remember I mentioned that salary increase matrix? What we've then identified is that if we've got high performers and they are in a certain comp ratio, then their increases start to lessen. And that's because they're already paid, you know, significantly higher than the midpoint. And so, Danny is like totally above the maximum. But if he was just slightly within, let's say he would have gotten a 2% increase. What we recommend is that you give him a 2% lump sum adjustment. So, don't adjust his base pay, but write him a check for that 2% of what he would have been paid. Because, remember I said, on an annual basis, we are going to look at adjusting the structure. And so, he eventually will work his way back in.
Can I ask one more question? I would be interested, I don't know, Brian or Laura, I'm assuming you guys were involved in this. What's your perspective on the process? Feedback, thought?
I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Oh, actually, I am.
I promise I won't hold it against you guys and I'm done with the numbers anyway.
Go ahead, Brian. I'll finish up if you don't speak.
I mean, I thought it was a very thorough process. We were asked a lot of questions. I just really was curious tonight to see how it was all presented. You know, we gave a lot of information but we weren't exactly sure what was to be recommended.
But you feel confident with the exercise?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. I mean, whether you say 80% or 90% are paid midpoint, I mean, that's the council policy decision on what you do there. But I thought the process was very fair, very good.
I concur. I think it was very thorough.
I think it was very thorough. I completely concur with what he said and the process is as Ms. Meriwether laid it out. And I have had feedback from some of our managers who thought it was thorough as well.
And let me say, over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of movement in municipalities conducting compensation studies. And so, I think there's going to be some competition for talent. I don't know what the level of talent is going to be, except the city of Hutchinson did, you know, pay a lot to look at public works and the utility director and how that should all look. And so, your next-door neighbor, Olahtha, is looking at their compensation work. Unified governments of Windaw County is looking at theirs. So, everybody is, again, looking at compensation. And I am confident that we've given you back enough information that you can be competitive in what you pay, even if it means that we have to take a look at different levels of complexity within a job family.
I thoroughly enjoyed the information. Thank you very much for coming and sharing with us this evening. We will be taking this under advisement at the future.
So, what are we going to do? I mean, so, from my perspective...
That's what I was going to say. Next steps.
That one's mine, too? Okay. Because what I, now that I've gotten all the feedback from my directors, I've got one or two positions that I've got to reshuffle. And so, then, we'll bring that back. And then, we're almost done with the performance management system. And then, it's a matter of addressing and introducing the performance management system to the general employee group. And then, it's all about doing training for my directors and for my managers as it relates to the performance management system. So, I think yours, don't let me get confused about when your fiscal year starts and ends. Calendar year, your calendar. So, we're already within the calendar year. What we then say, do you do all of your reviews at one point? Very good. And so, is it review time or we missed review time?
We just completed review time.
Okay. So, with completing review time, you still need to use the system that you had introduced the early part of the year. So, you're on, you're old. And now, coming in, my managers and directors will sit with their employees to say, this is where you are in the new structure. These are the job objectives and standards of performance that we're going to be looking at. It's going to be a little bit longer than this. And these are the core competencies. So going forward through this year, this is what you'll be held accountable for. If there's someone with some issues, I'm recommending that we take a look at having a conversation with them quarterly. If not, then I like an informal conversation every six months. Informal meaning if I catch you at the water fountain, and I still see there's some things that's not going right, that there's a conversation. Cause this really is a system to set my employees up to succeed and not to fail. So that's kind of where we are. Only because if it was a substantial dollar amount below that eighty percentile, then I would be saying, sure, we need to take a look at this right away. So then we can start moving folks up, but it's not. And so now we're starting to go forward. Conversation with the employees as to what the performance management system looks like. Another conversation with my managers and directors and say, this is what we have. What else do we need to change about it? And then moving forward, that's then when we anticipate we will start with those increases according to the salary increase matrix. That would be the end of our 2015 period.
See, I, I, I mean, I'm just gonna weigh in here. I, I don't agree with that. I, I think that we budgeted, we knew this stuff was going to happen and this stuff was going to come back. And, I mean, we've been looking for this type of information, I'll say, since I've been on the council. And, and I think that, I, I feel like we're penalizing employee base by not taking action where it makes sense to do it. I mean, it, it, I just-
That's good. That's what I was sitting here thinking. I mean, we budgeted for it, and done studies and things. I think we should take some appropriate action with this, and not wait until next fiscal year.
Right. I, I mean, I agree with the review, and, and I think going forward, but I think that we should have information from last year's performance, and that we should be looking at how we can integrate and move forward with, with some of this stuff for this year. That's my opinion.
No, I, I would agree because that's, we were, we'd make everybody wait like eight or nine times.
Right, I, yeah, I don't-
That's it. Let me just say, that's an easy fix. I mean, that, that really is an easy fix. It's just simply now a matter of looking at the salary increase matrix, and saying your comp ratio is here, this is how, this is what your review from last year. I cannot remember the number of ratings that you currently have.
Three.
Three. I just then need to readjust the salary increase matrix to match up with the three ratings that you currently have. And it's, it's just a quadrant, a few quadrants. And then you then would give that increase. And let me tell you why I think it's important to be that consistent. It's because I don't want someone in public works to give a ten percent increase, and somebody in parks to give a four or five percent increase. I really want them to do it consistently across, but that really is an easy fix. So it's just a matter of redoing a salary increase matrix, tying it to the current comp ratios, cause we probably need to make sure that we've updated their pay. Cause I might be just a little bit off in where those numbers are. I turned around to look at Mac, he sent it to me. So I might just be a little off, but take a look at that, run the comp ratios, use the same salary increase matrix. And I will say this, when we've targeted, let's say we targeted three percent for the entire group, if there's someone who exceeded the expectations and with a low comp ratio, then we're recommending that they would get a five or six percent increase rather than a three percent. Because they're already low with the comp ratio, and then moving them up faster.
Which is pretty typical. Yeah, I, I would just really like for us to do something this year, like, soon.
I agree.
I agree.
That looks like consensus.
Oh, I think that's a great idea. Well, you know what? I'm gonna go home and redo that comp ratio thing now. And then I'll send it to you guys. Any more questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys. I appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, we've got a second presentation item this evening. Uh, we're going to discuss, we're gonna have a presentation discussion of the fire study for Johnson County Fire District Number One, contract versus consolidation. Laura Gorley, good evening.
Hello.
I'll look at him go. The, the good stuff's about to happen. Actually, let's let the migration handle it.
Okay.
It's, it's a little noisy for a moment. Jody's gonna step out for a little bit.
Jody, Jody made a mistake at that front.
Okay. The din is down. Uh, Laura, good evening.
Good evening. So, in 2010, the city entered into a three-year agreement through December 2013 with Johnson County Fire District of Fire and EMS Services. And the agreement contained options for three additional one-year extensions for 2014 through 2016. Thus far, council has approved these agreements for two of those three years, for 2014 and 2015. You approved the 2015 extension at the November seventeenth meeting last year. Also at that meeting, the fire district proposed consolidation for the 2016 year. Subsequently, council asked for an analysis for the cost of consolidation versus renegotiating a future contract, and that's what I'm here to present. The original agreement contains language stating that consolidation of the entities is the intent, but when there would be no increase in mill rate for gardener citizens. The study was premised on projecting a mill levy equality between the city and the fire district. And this slide shows how the mill rates compare currently. So for the 2015 budget year, we're paying 1.225 million. In gardener mills, that's nine point zero zero nine. Fire district mills, eleven point two four six. That's what those numbers mean. 2016, the projection, and the contract is for 1.286, eight point four one five gardener mills, nine point six three five fire district mills. And that's based on the projection for the increase in values as well. So it's essential for understanding mill levy equality, and if, which is essentially the same thing as assessed valuation equality, to have a little bit of background on how assessed valuation works. And while the governing body may know it, those listening on the video may not, so I'll go through it. Every year, the county appraiser appraises property's market value, and then calculates an assessed value using the appropriate statutory assessment rate for the type of property. A mill is a measure of representing one dollar for every one thousand dollars of assessed valuation. So it's the assessed value that is needed to calculate property tax. The fire district's taxing area includes Logistics Park KC and New Century, both of which include abated properties. The largest driver of the fire district's growth is new development at Logistics Park KC, assumed to be, assumed to be abated for the study projections. Although the county appraiser annually evaluates market value of abated properties, the assessed value of abated properties is officially always zero. Because Kansas law says if it's abated, it's a hundred percent abated. It's only through payment in lieu of tax agreements that we achieve partial abatements. In the study, assumptions were made to calculate the taxing value for partial abatements. So as a starting point, based on the information we received from county appraiser Welcome in February, this is the rounded value of the city's assessed valuation and the fire district's assessed valuation. Gardner is at a hundred and forty-one million assessed valuation, fire district seventy-six million, roughly fifty-four percent of Gartner's. Every year, in this study, three variables changed. The assessed valuation of Gardner, the assessed valuation of the fire district, and the amount of money needed to pay for fire service. I will point out that for the purpose of my study, I assumed no significant economic development for Gardner. And I did assume projections for the fire district to increase 1.3 million square feet at Logistics Park KC for the 2017 budget year, and a million and a half square feet annually thereafter. As county appraiser Welcome said that, we could expect that. Two methods were used to determine the cost. That's the third variable I talked about, the cost of the fire services. One was annual estimated contractual payments, which I converted into mills so we could project parity. And then the other was an estimate of the mill levy, assuming consolidation of the city's evaluation and the count, and the fire district's valuation combined. For the annual contractual payments, in this method, I was projecting mill levy equality for the two entities, which is essentially, like I said, the same thing as assessed valuation equality. Was modeled using two different starting points for the contract dollar amount. And I used two different annual inflation rates for the contract dollar amounts for sensitivity analysis. Cause I wanted to see how much the contractual payment inflation rate impacted mill levy parity. So for one inflation rate, I used seven percent, because that's one percent of less than our two-year average growth rate now that we're growing again. And then I also used a double-digit inflation rate of ten percent, which actually exceeds our two-year projected growth rate. So I was looking for something a little less, something a little more. Consolidation, I also modeled it two ways. For consolidation, I calculated by dividing the fire district's budget that we had last year for the two thousand, for the November meeting, over the projected combined assessed valuation of both entities, to determine what the mill rate would be to be approximate to the nine mills that we're paying today. So when I did the modeling two ways, I took the fire district costs from their budget, and I held it constant over the modeling period, no increase in their expenditures. And then I did another version for sensitivity, where I took their budget and I used an annual inflation rate of three percent. So in conclusion, under the contract, under the contractual scenario, the modeling projects assessed valuation or mill levy parity in 2019, regardless of the contractual dollar amount starting point, or the inflation rate applied for the contractual payment. In the consolidation scenario, modeling projects nine point mills, nine point zero mills, which is what we're being paid, what we're paying today, reached in 2019, assuming the fire district annual budget increase of three percent, or if it never changed and it held stagnant over the modeling period, it could be 2018. So that was the really high-level summary of all that pages and pages of stuff. So if you have any questions, I'm here.
So, uh, flipping over to, uh, the page with the average cost to the homeowner.
Oh, that's, that was a supplemental study. So-
Are we gonna get to that, or?
Uh, I wasn't. That was the, for your information. So for people listening on video or in the audience, I also had a supplemental study that I did that was not requested by the governing body. It simply shows a comparison of the other fire districts in Johnson County, and what it shows is we have the best deal. Gardner's cost is the lowest among the others. So what's happening in that study is it's the average cost, I'm sorry, it's the cost of fire services to an average homeowner. So that's why I included the tables that had the values of city comparison and zip comparison, because the average home changes in the different districts. But that's still, an average home in those fire districts is paying that amount of money for fire service, is what that was showing. But that was not part of what you guys asked me to do tonight. It was just extra information showing you got the best deal right now.
Well, I just had a question about the, the numbers that were used, uh, for the mill levy in, in that study.
So what page are you looking at?
Well, the one with the-
All the colors on it?
Yeah. Green and yellow.
Okay, hold on. Okay, what about it?
Uh, you have fifteen, uh, point four four eight.
Right.
But then the, uh, analysis step ten, I think you had like twelve point three four two.
Because a mill value changes as the assessed valuation changes. So this is their mills now. And there's, oh, there's other components in the mill, in assessed valuation.
The fifteen, doesn't the fifteen include a bond?
There is bond included, but, but I just took that, I took their cost of their budget, all their cost in their budget, and spread it over the consolidation, so it should have accounted for that.
But, but if we don't pay for the bond, right, the bond should be taken out. The three mills for the bond, that doesn't apply to us, does it?
If you consolidated-
Right.
It would, oh, I, I actually called county, um, I think it's county clerk John Bartelak, and asked him that very question, and he said he couldn't answer that question right now. But I don't, I cannot answer that, but what I'm saying is, I took, so you're looking at the twelve. Hold on, in the study.
Uh, analysis step number ten.
Okay. Let me catch up with you.
With three percent budget inflation.
Okay. What I'm saying is, the fire district's three point three budget, that came right from their budget document, which would include the cost to also pay the bonds. And you're saying we wouldn't pay that? I'm saying I can't answer that question because county, county clerk or whatever he is, John Bartelak couldn't answer that question. So I left it in. Cause I, I couldn't take it out if he couldn't tell me whether or not he could take it out.
Potentially it could come out.
I, I, I-
Those numbers. It potentially could.
I guess so, because I asked him that question, he said, I can't answer that question. Okay. So he, he needed a lot more information than that. And I, I would assume that a part of that information would also have come from, from the fire district, not from me. I really can't answer those questions for him. But he didn't ask me any.
Chris, you look like you were wanting to hear him.
No, I am not, no.
Not anyone?
So what you're saying is if, I think what you're saying, let me try to go backwards with this.
Yeah.
You're saying if the fire district's costs were somewhat less than three point three million, cause that's just one year's worth, so there would be a bond payment every year, then parity could be achieved sooner. Answer yes. But I can't answer whether or not that is a true statement to start with.
Right.
And I did not model that because I could not answer that question.
Or not parity achieved sooner, but, but the difference would be less.
The difference would be less, but if you're starting with something less and you're working your way together, parity could be, I don't know how much impact it would have. You're talking about every year there would be one budgeted bond payment. You wouldn't take the whole amount of the bonds and say, we're not gonna take four million dollars this year or whatever, because it's year by year that you make your payments, and that's what you're budgeting. So it would, it would have impact, some impact.
Laura, if the intermodal facility continues to grow quicker than expected, would that hasten the timeline to where the utilization would occur?
Not very much.
No?
Not very much, because remember, it's abated.
Right, exactly.
And the fire district gets their share of the abated amount. So what, what would really have, what would really impact it a lot faster would be if something in the fire district were to gain significant commercial development instead of industrial. Not, or, all abatements maximum is ten, ten years. So if some of the abatements were less than ten years, I'm making, I made the assumption for the purpose of this, that all the stuff at Logistics Park was ten years. But if some of them were less, it could impact, or the ones at New Century that I also modeled, I said they didn't, I have no way of knowing. I said they didn't expire during the modeling period, cause it was only, what, four years, four or five years? If they do, that would also have some impact, but not as much as commercial development or something else. Cause, cause remember, commercial developments were, for our little example we used at the economic symposium, thousand gardener homes. Industrial was, abated industrial was three hundred. So there's a big difference between commercial and industrial. So if it grew faster, it would have impact, but probably not years impact, parity faster.
But if we were to get something completed, let's say, next month, that would make, we would continue to decline as far as the cost, almost never getting parity.
Yes, that's exactly right. So what I modeled was, we don't get anything, they get stuff. Because I was trying to show you the worst case or whatever. But in other words, if Gardner grew faster, we would not achieve parity. You're right.
But, but, I mean, this contract is only for next year, right?
Right now, you only have an existing contract with an extension for 2016. The councilman, I believe it's Councilman Freeman, is the one that specifically said, I wanna see something that shows me extending the contract. So I kinda went with the same kinda thing we had going versus consolidation.
I think this is exactly what we asked, to see, I mean, the, the financial impact between the existing agreements they have with different, and different, versus what we asked, since ours is a little bit unique, and so.
Right. They gave you, like I said,
Yeah.
two different starting points, two different inflation rates, one single digit, one a little bit less than what we're doing, one double digit more than what we're doing, kinda gave you a worst case, best case kinda thing.
Can we pull the slide up again that just had the, uh, just the baseline comparison, it would have been?
The starting point?
Um, no, the one that showed, no, uh, the endpoint for where in, uh, that one, nope, this one, with the mills on it.
That's your current contract.
Yeah, that's-
So two thousand, right. So 2016 is either one point two eight six or one point three. But you can, there's a clause in the agreement that says that you can agree to seven percent increase if our market value increased more than five, and it did.
Right.
So that's why I gave you both.
That's the red numbers.
That's the red numbers.
Right.
So, and, and looking at this then, the other, the other community, or the other people that are part of fire district are at the nine eight one nine. And we would theoretically be at eight five seven six from a mill impact perspective.
If my projections are good.
Right.
That's what I'm, yes, yes, yes.
And again, I know it always comes back, what's the value of a mill currently in Gardner?
Well, at the moment, it's gone up just a hair. I used to tell you it was eighteen dollars and forty cents, because an average home was roughly a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Now your average home is roughly a hundred and sixty six, sixty seven, so it's used nineteen twenty.
Okay.
So a difference in this scenario of, of one point three mills, is that roughly?
Right. So you would take that times twenty bucks annually. That's, that's exactly right.
Do we anticipate hearing back from this John Bartelak fellow?
He has nothing more to say until there's something to, I, I got the impression, he didn't, what he said is he didn't have enough information to go on, and I gave him the kind of, you know- And I gave him the kind of, you know, scenario that we were talking about consolidation, maybe, or what if? I did the whole what if thing, and he said he needed to see a whole lot more information from the fire district. But I didn't, he didn't elaborate, and he said, "I just can't answer that question right now." And no, I don't know what else to ask him just yet. So I'll be happy to call him again if you have something that you want me to... He was not committing.
Okay.
Well, I guess from my perspective, so we, we, at some point in time will maybe renew this contract, right, for 2016. We, either way we go, we have to make some longer-term decisions. And I think that those discussions for those decisions need to happen much sooner rather than later. So I guess from my perspective, I would like to know whether it would be Rob, whoever needs to be involved from both the fire district and us and the county, that we start sitting down and really getting some of those questions answered and having those discussions, because 2016, you know, is going to be here before we know it. And we, I think that we, that the, further in advance we start planning for this, the better off we're going to be.
Exactly to your point. I'll just give you the heads up now that March 23 policy work session, I was going to ask you what consensus directive on 2016, because you still have one year. And then, then what? And so that's kind of a policy decision, but that's among yourselves. What will your direction to staff be, both for the one-year extension that you still have? And then, you know, the contract specifically states, as it is now, the intent is consolidation. But that's how you get there, or what you agree to, that's back to you all. But I will be asking that on Monday, again.
Well, and as far as actionable items on this, is, when is this anticipated to come before council? To, for 2016, are you saying?
Monday. I'm going to ask you Monday if you've got a decision. For 2016, for your one year.
What the decision needs to come, really come down to at this point is beyond 2016.
Right.
And where we look at that equalization, and what should...
Well, actually, your fire district proposed consolidation. The decision is in or yes or no on that, and then, yeah, and then in the future.
Right.
Right.
What, on the 23rd, so, is that, is that a formal meeting, is that this?
It's a work session.
Work session, okay.
So it was already on that?
So we will have representation from the fire district.
They're here tonight. I don't, there's nothing more to talk about from my perspective. It's up to you all now. I, unless you didn't like something in the study, I don't have anything else to say. Do you want me to stand aside?
Either, you'll certainly get time next week as well, if you want to take a minute and digest this, or if you've got something to say at this point.
I just want to, I want to comment on a couple of items here. The bond, I want to address the bond situation first. We, as a fire district, went out and we got a bond prior to the consolidation on it. And that bond stays with the people at the time that we got the consolidation. And it's non-transferable. So, you know, according to our bond people is that it's non-transferable. So if we were to merge, still the citizens of the county that originated the bond are committed to paying that bond until sun sets up. So I want to address that first, and let you know that that's tiny hot steps. The other question that you had was in reference to the 15 mills and difference between the 12. Well, that 15 is definitely a 12, because the 15 is with the bond in it. And that needs to be taken out, and when we're talking about our relationship with the city of Gardner and moving forward with that, because we're dealing about operating, we're dealing with operating bond mills only, okay? Now, in the event when we do, or if, or when, or whenever we come together and do get another bond, then the citizens of Gardner, as well as everybody in our district, will be, you know, they'll be responsible for paying that bond until sun sets. We would like, I've got a couple of board members here. We would surely like to get in and have a work session to talk to you guys about this. We kind of went over our presentation earlier. We kind of went over different thoughts on what we've done already with the ISO and that money that we took from the ISO, and the savings we've already shown. And as Laura said, the mill now comes down to $20. Well, we sure want to talk about that to you. So I would ask, on behalf of my board behind me, is that we do have a work session where we can all sit down and we can talk about this, and together, and collaborate just together instead of bits and pieces at a time. So that would be my challenge. And my question to you up there is, is that we get together, we sit down together and work through this.
I'm sure that that's something that could be arranged. We're going into budget season. It's work session after work session after council meeting after council.
And this is something that, you know...
What's one more?
Well, but Mayor, we need to know, because it's going to take a little bit of doing to get this done. If you're looking, you know, if you were to come up here and say we want to do this next year, I don't know if we can do it by next year, because I know we have to have some, our lawyers need to get together, and there's some legalities involved in this. I don't know what extent of it is. I don't know if we need to go to Pika and do some work up there. But the sooner that we can get together and figure out where we're going in our destiny, because right now, we, we as a fire department, our vision is obscured right now, on where we're going, because...
So I guess from my perspective, and I don't know if this happens next week, if it's a presentation or collaborative or what have you, but I think it would be beneficial to hear, Rob, from the fire district, why, I mean, you understand us sitting up here, and basically we have this deal for 2016 that is less than what it would be without it, right? So we need to understand why, why would we do that, I guess? So if that could be the approach from the fire district or the board members to say, you know, these are the, I don't know what that looks like, but I think that's the struggle, is why would we do that? You know?
So I got two weeks then to put something together, is that what I'm hearing? Are we talking about a week from today?
From today.
Monday's work session was scheduled pretty full for policy decisions, so to share with you all about how, that's pretty quick for probably for Rob, but we're here, sir, whatever you'd like.
Well, then, we had a work session, we can have a work session before our council meeting in April. I realize we're trying to set budget goals and initiatives at this meeting on the 23rd, but, you know, we can set a goal and initiative, but take it under advisement. You know, as we, as everybody learns every year, as we learned, definitely last year, it's not over until it's over. And if we can, if we can work something out so that we can get them back for a work session. And it sounds like we need to get Dottie and Ryan talking with whoever the bond council is for the fire district.
I think Mr. Bartelak needs to be involved in this, because something is causing confusion on his end. And I, and he's the man that's going to find...
Yeah, I can speak with him about that issue, because we've talked about several other issues, and that's never came up, so I'll...
Yeah, I don't know, he was completely not available, and basically just said he needed more information from the fire district, and he didn't go with what he needed, so...
Well, that's, I think we can set an initiative for the 2016 budget, but take it under advisement and plug in a change later if we need to. But, yeah, I mean, the better, the better we can understand it, and the more information we have, the easier it is to make a decision. And, but that sounds like a critical piece.
And going forward, I mean, we're going to be partners in this for, you know...
That is in need of tax.
We are already, but, you know, I think we should have a good partnership and include them in making this decision.
But, yeah, that's, but when you look at the deal, and when we're looking out for our taxpayers, it's important to watch every cent, so...
Sure, and we understand it, Mayor, and...
I know you do, Rob. I know you do, Chief. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
So what date or...
Let me, let's, let's figure out...
Well, I mean, okay, so let me just say, I was just looking, Monday, it looks like we're scheduled from 6 to 8, right? I mean, I'd be willing an extra 30 minutes or what have you.
Absolutely.
I know I'm speaking to myself, but if we're going to be here anyhow, I don't know if that gives you enough time.
That's what I'm thinking, I'm, Rob's telling us that's not enough time. He doesn't want to say that's enough time, and that's just what he's basically saying.
We didn't get this package until Thursday afternoon, and our accountant really hasn't had, I mean, he's in his taxis right now, and he's looked through it and had some questions about it, but he hasn't really had time to get it under, because we sure would like to have him here, too.
And we've got a couple of council meetings that we could slide a work session in front of.
I think so.
Well, we might have.
So why don't we let them, let the district look at it? Let us know when they think they're going to be ready, because we, we have the, per the agreement, we would be budgeting this amount. So we can move forward with that budgeted amount, and we'll see what they come back with, when they're ready. That way we don't set a timeframe today.
Obviously, as quickly as possible, I mean, from everybody.
But he can get back with us and let us know when he's ready.
They want to be able to plan accordingly, so I know they'll get that, but a week sounds too fast, I think.
Yeah, I think that's another... Anybody else right now? Chief, thank you for coming.
All right, thank you, always good to see you.
Thank you. Laura, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to make comments about city matters or items on the agenda that are not part of a public hearing. If you've got something that you would like to say, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and be heard.
Good evening, Councilman Mr. Mayor, my name's Rich Mountain, I live at 521 East Hawthorne. First off, I thought during some council work sessions, we were going to have time for out here in the peanut gallery to voice concerns or opinions based on things you guys talked about. I think we've talked about that at other meetings. I haven't seen that yet, because it's now an hour's gone by since all the talking about different things about economic development. I had some things that I wanted to point out. You guys were talking about incentives and different things for certain groups of people, certain manufacturers or tech companies. I'm just going to tell you, if you don't offer that to everybody, right now Gardner cannot afford to not have whatever it is that wants to come to town. So you've got to look at it, we can't just be selective and go, hey, we just want tech guys or this or that. We've got to have it to everybody. Also, and I'll never understand this for the life of me, for some reason, we keep focusing on economic development downtown when we don't own any buildings but this one downtown. If you're so focused on economic development downtown, and what we need to bring here, we're not looking at the rest of the town as a whole. So, I mean, maybe if we thought about economic development everywhere, instead of just downtown, downtown will fix itself. The other thing is, if you really want to look at what would be beneficial for Gardner, we need businesses that start here and stay here. So if you had some kind of a incubator system for startups, like myself, my company is a great example, as a manufacturer, there's no place in Gardner for me to move. Yet, I started my business here, and if, without some kind of an incubator or some other place to move to, as a manufacturer, I'm not going to stay in Gardner forever. There's a limit to where I can go and what I can do. But an incubator, if it was, if the city would get behind that with a developer, you'd have all these businesses that actually start here. And then, once they get big enough to move outside, they're going to stay in this general vicinity. That's where companies up the highway have done such a great job of having places for these companies to start at. And Garmin's a great example. They started in Olathe, but then they just stayed there. That's what Gardner needs to do, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Good evening. I also, too, wanted to make a couple comments about the economic development. And again, also, I thought that at one of our council meetings, that everybody kind of agreed that there would be some interaction with the public during work sessions. And again, I haven't seen that as well. The gentleman that was giving a presentation kept saying how important it was to know what the surrounding communities are doing. But when I look at this sheet, we don't have Edgerton anywhere on here. Edgerton's knocking at our back door. Why would they not be considered important enough to have on this surrounding jurisdiction incentive if he repeatedly said it's important to know that? So maybe somebody can speak at some point in time to why Edgerton was not included on this particular survey. Debbie Hickson, 848 South Dumeck, sorry, I did that backwards. Thank you.
Now, I see Greg Martin is approaching the podium. Greg is the new...
Segway.
President of the Southwest Johnson County EDC. We had put him on the agenda last time as a presenter, but it was really meant to be an introduction. He hasn't been feeling especially well, so I suggested that if he was, I'm still looking a little green around the hills, but that if he was feeling up to it tonight, he could come and talk to us a little bit, and introduce himself to the council and those assembled.
Thanks, Mayor, Council, Cheryl. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I am the new president of the Southwest Johnson County Economic Development Corporation, and just now, two months into it. And like the mayor said, I wanted to give you a little bit of my background and talk, just briefly, give you an overview of some of the things that we're doing already. The Southwest Johnson County EDC has been in existence for about 25 years, and we're doing some things that have never been done before. And it's important for you to know that, and as we work through some of these things. I've been in a professional economic developer for 25 years now, and started off in the utility business, telephone, and then into electric and gas. And the last 15 years, representing communities as a consultant, working with communities like Gardner to help them reach the goals, such as you've talked about earlier this evening. Over those years, I've worked with companies like Harley-Davidson, who you heard Bob Marcus talk about the other night. In fact, one of the incentives that we, he mentioned, securing the land for Harley-Davidson, we actually bought the land and gave it to them. It was a requirement to land the deal, and it's typical of this one consultant that's very popular that they use, is he always requires that his client gets free land. And so we came up with a creative process where the utility could buy the land, donate it back to the state of Missouri, who, all right, an entity of the state of Missouri, who then gave it to Harley-Davidson, and the utility got a tax deduction for that. So that's one of the interesting creative ways that incentives are used throughout the process. There's four things that we're really going to focus on. And to be a top-shelf economic development organization, which we're going to be, you have to be better than everybody else at these four things. Because if you don't do these, incentives aren't going to matter. We're never going to offer incentives, because we're not going to have anybody to offer them to. So there's a lot of work that has to be done before we can start offering incentives. And first of all, we're totally revamping our website. It is, it's antiquated, it has old data on it. That is the front door to our community, and it's got to be a lot better. And it'll be state-of-the-art, and we're about halfway done on that now. Our site and building database, that's where consultants, state Department of Commerce folks, corporate executives, that's where they go initially to look for available sites and buildings. If it isn't up to date, you're not in the game. And so we've got to do a much better job with that, and we are doing that. And going along with that, I have to understand the intricacies of those sites and buildings, and that's some of the work that I'm doing now. We must own our labor force data. The first question you get is, do you have the labor, not only for my business to start today, but five years from now and 10 years from now? And so we will have an advisory task force that the mayor has volunteered to serve on, that with another, a number of other individuals that, where we will be experts on the labor force in this region. And then, as the gentleman said earlier, we've got to take care of our existing business. And that's not something that the Southwest Johnson County EDC has done in the past. We will have a very aggressive business retention program that we've already started on, and I'll talk a little bit more about that here as we go. But initially, when I took the job, I gave our executive committee a... But initially, when I took the job, I gave, uh, our executive committee a sixty-day plan, and here's, uh, here's what we're doing. First of all, uh, I retain Krista Claus, she has worked with me in the past, you may recognize her name. She is, uh, she'll be working on a, in a contract for us, but she is the present, uh, business editor for KMBC Radio. You'll hear, hear her on ninety, ninety-eight point one every single morning. She is a past business editor for the Kansas City Business Journal, and she was an anchor and reporter for Channel Five and Channel Nine before that. But she has a very keen business sense, she can get in the door to talk to the business folks, she knows how to talk their language, and, and then she knows where to go to get results for needs that they may have. She will be assisting me with that. Also, she will be in charge of our social media and other media, and she's writing a lot of the copy on, on, on our new website right now. We're meeting with all of our investors, partners, and business leaders. This is taking some time, but we're, we're trying to knock that out, 'cause I need to know what you want in your community. And, and I've been fortunate to, uh, to meet with Cheryl on several occasions, and the mayor as well, and, and go to the symposium the other night, that was excellent, and we're gonna continue to do that. We needed to make some organization enhancements, and we're doing it, we're revamping our bylaws, some of the board makeup. First thing that I wanted to do was make sure that our three biggest investors, Gardner, Edgerton, and New Century Airport are on our executive committee, the ones that make the biggest decisions, which that wasn't the case before, made, makes no sense to me, but that's, uh, that's going to be changed. We've, uh, as I mentioned, we're establishing our social media presence. This is today's marketing, it's, uh, there's really no better, more cost-efficient way to do that, and, and just today, we were on Twitter and our Facebook fan page, uh, talking about the article in the Kansas City Business Journal Friday, or the, the list that had Gardner as the, the third fastest-growing community in the metropolitan area over the next several years. So, that, that's an impressive, impressive data, and we wanted to make sure that, that everybody sees that, so we're tweeting it, we're, we're Facebooking it, and, and as the day's gone on, my phone's been buzzing as people retweeted and favorited. So, um, yeah, I've also, what's called boosted that on Facebook, so it'll go to, uh, approximately twelve thousand folks above the age of twenty-eight that live in Gardner Spring Hill, and Edgerton, and gives them an opportunity to, to talk about that as well. But that's not just for promoting us, we'll also use that for business retention. If one of our companies needs to hire ten, or fifteen, or twenty employees at a certain level, we'll put that on our Facebook page. We've done it before, it's very successful. They're having a special promotion, we'll do that as well. So, that'll be a big part of what we do. I mentioned our, our state-of-the-art webpage, it's really, I just got to see the new template, it's gonna be phenomenal. It will link in to all the work that you've done here, the economic development plan, the comprehensive plan, the, the incentive policy, that is finalized, uh, and we'll be very proud of that. Site and buildings update, uh, is well underway, that's a, that's a long, hard process, and what I call a lot of grinding economic development work, but it's stuff that needs to be done, and it needs, needed to be done yesterday. Then in May, we're, early part of May, we're going to have a kickoff, or, or relaunch of the organization, where we'll roll out the new website, uh, we'll announce some new membership enhancements, uh, and levels of membership. We're going to make being an investor in the Southwest Johnson County EDC much more valuable for those people that are, based on some of the things that I've just mentioned here. Then we'll also roll out the new plan. And then, I think about the same time in May, I'll be coming back to you with, uh, a, a budget and, and more detailed plans, what we, what we intend to do on your behalf. But, uh, just to, to leave you here quickly, I wanna give you some, what you can see as attributes of our organization, of our staff. And I think it's important to recognize that, uh, this is a new game for, uh, for this region. This, we're taking economic development to a new level. I've been in this area for a little time, so I've known what's gone on down here, and there's a lot of things new that we can do, and, and one of the things I didn't mention is retail. And I mentioned all the, or a few of the projects I've worked on, but I've been, uh, intricately involved in, in attracting retail for over fifteen years, and so we'll be at International Council of Shopping Centers in May, we'll be attracting office, um, it will be attracting high-level commercial. It's important that we diversify, or keep diversifying this area, and not just become branded as a logistics center. So that's a major focus of mine. But the attributes that, that I want you to recognize, uh, in us is we'll be consistently professional, we'll be customer-driven, and every one of you is our customer. We'll be stakeholder-led, and you are a stakeholder. We'll be results-oriented, I will come to you with measurables, and at the end of the year, we will go over those measurables and see, see where we were, and we'll work to get those measurables together. We're gonna be sophisticated, and, and I've mentioned some of the things we're working on, the high-level website, and, and the way we go about doing business is gonna be very sophisticated and first-class. We're gonna leverage the talents, uh, and resources of our partners. Kansas City Power and Light is a major, uh, major contributor for projects. In fact, they're paying for half of our website. Uh, Kansas City Area Development Council is one of the best ED organizations in America, and they spend a lot of money marketing and promoting this area. We will leverage what they do there. Technology is our friend, uh, I mentioned the website and social media, uh, we will use that for marketing so that our customers who wanna move their business here understand that they're mov- they're moving into a very technology-friendly area. We'll be excellent communicators, we will be laser-focused, we're gonna be fun and exciting, and sometimes that's not easy in economic development, and we're gonna possess the intangibles, and, and I wanna focus on that for just a minute. You do business with people you know, like, and trust, and you can have the best incentives in the world, you can have the best piece of ground, but somebody else is gonna have those same things. All those incentives that were on that board, every other community in Kansas can offer those. So how do you set yourself apart? Well, every time there's, every deal that's ever done, they're sitting around a table, and it'll come up, where the, the decision-makers, and they'll say, well, you know, this community, you know, they both have this, you know, they both seem like they've got everything we need, the labor is good, the incentives look good, the ground's good, so how do they decide? Well, they chose, they choose who they know, like, and trust, and that's where we're gonna separate ourselves from everybody else. So, with that, uh, you know, to answer any questions, or we can wait till next time. I, I thank you for your time, sorry about my voice.
Yeah, that's, that was, that was more comprehensive than I was actually anticipating.
I hope I didn't take too long.
I appreciate, no, uh, we're glad to have the information, and we look forward to having you back come May to talk about, the, the details and the new, the new launch of the, of the, uh, the new EDC.
Thank you all.
Thanks, sir.
Good evening. Um, for the record, my name is Mary Bush, and I've served as your administrative services manager for the city of Gardner. This has been my home for fourteen years. I've been a small business owner, involved in this community, and served as city as an employee for eight years. With our homes and our businesses that we have invested, we have invested our family over one million dollars in this community. I am not a fly-by-night citizen who comes in, nor an employee. So I know you have on your agenda tonight the review of position elimination. So regardless of what you decide, I have a couple thoughts. One, I'd like to address in the spirit of transparency and honesty about the compensation study. Um, I can't answer to that because your human resource staff was completely left out of this process. I find that interesting, and in all of my years of experience serving in human resources, I have never seen that done. So, we have a lot of new directors, a lot of new management, I would've thought you would have utilized the staff who knew all of the positions. So I wanna make sure you have that information as you go forward with your study. Second, to the city council, to the directors and the employees of the city of Gardner. You are some of the finest people I've had the privilege and honor to serve with. These employees are a team of dedicated, hard-working, committed employees who deserve all the respect that often they do not get from leadership and the citizens of this community. I wish each of them the best, and regardless of what happens in the future, please take care of them. They are fine people, and they are committed to your community. I wish each of you the best, and I thank you for your help and support during my tenure of working for the city of Gardner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any public comments? Uh, with no one coming forward, we move to the consent agenda. Is there a council member that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Please, uh, item number three, please. Okay. So, uh, would we like to entertain a motion on approving consent agenda items one, two, and four? Salute?
Second.
Motion Freeman, second winners, that we approve consent agenda items one, two, and four. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda items one, two, and four pass. Uh, authorizes to the administrator to execute an agreement with Selectron Technologies to implement an integrated voice response system for utility billing. Is, who's gonna handle this one?
Do you want me to go to the phone?
If, if you've got the mic there by you, that's fine. Uh, questions for-
I did have a few questions.
More about number three?
Yeah, um, first question I had was the term of the agreement, it was a five-year agreement?
Yes.
Was there any consideration made for even a three-year agreement or a shorter term, or was this the only one available from the vendor?
Um, actually, that question has to go to Greg. I, I came in on, yeah, I, I don't know. It was five years until, plus additional extensions, until somebody stopped.
Right.
That's, I don't know, Amy? Amy?
When they priced quote it, uh, that we asked for in the budget, it was on a five-year contract based on the, the migration of information.
Okay.
Um, and so, we could go on a yearly contract, but it is much more expensive, because you have to migrate the information, it goes through security guards. So we had them only sort of for five years. And that's what we had asked for in the budget.
The other question I had, and that makes perfect sense, um, the other question I had was in regards to the annual fees, and how the annual fees are set for allotment up to twenty thousand calls annually, which obviously is a huge increase from what, what we've seen. I didn't know if that was just their entry level of call volume, or if there's an opportunity to look at a smaller call volume from a cost perspective, because it just seems to be more capacity than we're ever going to need.
That call line, we, we talked about if we wanted to-
You probably should go to the podium now.
Okay, sorry. Um, the cost that, when we asked for the system, it was mostly for people who wanted to make a payment over the phone. However, when we started looking at the call volume for that, if you choose to call on the weekend and see what your account balance is, if you have a delinquent, that actually acts as a call as well. We didn't account for those calls, 'cause we do not track them. And so we actually felt like, based on what we're taking in payment, this'll be available twenty-four seven, um, and so people can just access their account as well. And so this is where we actually put what we felt our call volume would be, and that our next step would probably be that we would have to come to you and ask for an addition, um, based on people calling, um, and getting those inquiries.
Okay. The other, um, I know Christie had a couple questions, I tried not to steal all of them, but, um, will there still be easy access for those individuals, especially, you know, I think about my mom, she doesn't wanna talk to the computer. Will she still be able to arrange payments by phone? Through the customer support representatives in the office, and have an easy way to access those people, rather than a dial-by menu?
Yes, we will hope to try to, to get people to use the automated system, however, um, we, oh, yeah, honestly, I always say, um, we wanna make it easy for people to pay, and so, if they're not comfortable with that, yes, we still have access, we'll be able to take them at the counter, over the phone. We're not under any obligation for them to have to use the integrated system, so.
Perfect. And then my final question-
There was also an option, if they wanna bail out of that automated circuit anytime, they can always go and ask for the operator, just like-
Okay.
Anything else.
My final question's probably a Greg question. Uh, just to make sure, we're committed to Sun Guard as the solution for well in five years, because the, reading the contract, there's no escape. Uh, even if we quit, we, unless it's a failure service, we're, we're committing to the dollars, for, uh, dollars on five-year terms, so.
My understanding is that they're already looking at that, and that the, uh, the recommendation, I'm sorry, you were the one doing the study, right?
Yeah, yeah, so he asked me as well. Um, so actually, um, I started the process of the software project.
Okay.
Um, and so, so we did ask them for a price quote on what it would cost if we left Sun Guard and went to another software, which is a twenty thousand dollar fee. And the reason for that is they have to rewrite all of the information, because they're gonna be linking into the system to pull the accurate account real-time, so when you make a payment, it shows up on the account. However, so with the software project, and the, the cost of what that would be to actually implement a whole new software, um, by the time you sign those contracts and go through training and setup, you're looking, you know, my feeling, my personal feeling, that the project isn't done, would be that you're looking at at least two years, um, without having this service. Um, and I know every, every penny counts. I will tell you that, um, I can tell you, the call volume that we had to stay, 'cause it was a due date, was insane. I probably myself, um, you know, because we were short staff, so when you have somebody out on vacation, eighty-degree weather, um, I myself probably took over forty payments by phone today. Um, and so, I can honestly tell you, I don't think I accomplished anything else today. And so, I, I understand that we're looking at that, that that contract's up, I just feel that there's a huge need in utility billing for the IVR system, and so, so I know that's a twenty thousand dollar price tag, uh, for it to be switched to another software. But Selectron would go with that software.
But we could do that.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I, I just had actually two quick questions. One of them, have we looked at, or is there an opportunity, well, I guess, with this technology, do we have opportunities in other organizations to link in and use automated systems to help drive efficiency?
Um, and yes, they do have other packages, um, such as outbound calls, uh, so we could look at packages to add on. If we wanted to call and remind people to pay their bill, if we were gonna have a set power outage, or a water line maintenance, uh, where we're taking something down, and we can group them into neighborhoods, yes, they do have other packages that you can add on to it. Um, they're all priced individually, and so I will be honest, I did not look at that price package.
Well, and I, I'm just thinking more longer-term, if, if we're investing, we, we know, I mean, I'm one of them, that calls that main number and asks, can you transform me to Jeff Stewart, or what have you, and I'm sure people ask to talk to Jody, or what have you. It would be nice if we could start thinking long-term about maybe some of those common call drivers, that perhaps we could build off of that. Okay. The, the other thing is, um, you, you talk about the man-hours, this saves five hundred and thirteen hours, which is about, I guess, thirteen weeks. So can you talk a little bit from a, I understand, efficiency-wise, but from a cost, I mean, does this, not having this, does it drive overtime? Does it cause you to require an extra person? What is the other side of this equation?
Well, I will tell you, um, so just, so just starting out, when I asked for this originally, um, we actually answered the main city hall phones, utility billing. We have two customer service reps, a utility billing specialist and myself. Um, we have meetings that, when they're inside, answer phones, but we are the hubs for the four cities. We're almost like the city receptionist as well. So, in a, for example, today, um, because again, we were short staff, we may pick up a call and ask them to hold, pick it up, and it may be for another department. So we just had a customer that actually sit on hold when they didn't even wanna talk to us. Um, and so, then we have three that wanted to make payments. So now we have three people in line, three on the phone, that wanna make payments. So I think it's a, a value of customer service, too, um, where they know that if they wanna make a payment, and that's all they're calling for, they're not waiting on hold, they're not feeling rushed at the counter, I mean, it has a trickle-down effect. Um, and there's other things that, that we would like to, to be doing, um, you know, projects we would like to be taking on, or not feel like we're rushing on a customer who, who may wanna call to pay their bill, but they also wanna talk about how come their bill's higher this month, or how come their water consumption jumped. Well, sometimes when, when you have a line out here, and all the phones ringing in the background, sometimes I feel like, you know, they feel like maybe they're a little bit rushed. And, and so I think it's, I guess, a good cost of service to the customer, um, would be my main feeling, please.
Five hundred and thirteen hours isn't insignificant when you're talking about a blended rate. 513 hours isn't insignificant when you're talking about a blended rate, including management as well as customer service, so...
Okay. No questions? I get it. Thanks.
Last question I had, from a finance perspective. What was the budgeted amount that we had for this project in the 2000s?
Exactly this.
Okay, so it came out...
It is exactly as stated. It was exactly as budgeted because we had these quotes before, and we just double-checked to make sure everything was still perfect because you actually approved it in the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Amy, we don't see you at the podium often, but it was nice to have you here this evening. Thank you. I'd entertain a motion on consent agenda item number three.
Move.
Second motion, Harrison, second Freeman, that we approve consent agenda item number three. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda item number three passed.
Amy's very excited.
Can you give a particular password?
Before we get started on the new business items, there is an executive schedule and agenda for after new business item number four. I'm just gonna let everybody know, we're gonna call for that after new business item number three and before new business item number four, so just be advised. New business item number one, consider awarding the transformer supply and installation contract to ABB Incorporated for Transformer Number One Replacement Project, City Project Number 1402. David Green, good evening.
Good evening. This project will replace the Transformer One, which is the step-up transformer for the city's generators at the Energy Center and also the main substation breaker. The project will be in several contracts. This is the first for the transformer. Each of these items have varying lead times, some approaching a year, so that's why we're bidding the transformer now. Transformer One is about 40 years old. One of the issues we have with it is the water separation system has a bladder. It's a membrane that fails periodically. It's on the verge of failure now. The replacement transformer would do like the other ones, it has nitrogen to keep it pressurized to keep the moisture out of it. Currently, from the last oil test, we're approaching the need to replace the bladder and to basically press the oil, which is get all the moisture and impurities out of it. The substation breaker was built in 1957. It's rated at 240 kilovolts. We operate 161 kilovolts. And one reason it's not...had to take out of service, it has an issue with insulation because we operated it lower than its rating. We've been able to keep it going. Each one of these units has 1,350 gallons of oil in it, so a leak hazard. It'd be replaced with a modern style, which has a gas system. We...before we took bids on February 25th, the total project estimate was a million and a half dollars. After receiving the bids, we've reduced the total project cost down to a million. We retained Sega as project engineer to prepare specifications. The specifications included three options for the type of monitoring system that would be included in the transformer. The base bid is just your basic stuff, which is basically gauges on the side, and then the upgrades are all various types of electronic systems that would tie into our SCADA system and our monitoring. We opened five bids on February 25th, after we'd advertised in the Gardner News, we'd advertised on the website, sent bids to five substation transformer suppliers. Bids range from, as far as the base bid, from a low submitted by ABB of 534,025 dollars to a high of Ilgen of 743,075. After review, the option one, which matches the type of relays and electronic systems we have, which is Schweitzer Electronic Laboratories, would be 542,755. The low bid, the high would be 750,195 dollars. The estimate was 900,000. The engineers reviewed...all these bidders generally submit quite a few exceptions to the specifications and some to the contract language. The engineer has reviewed all the technical specifications and found them to be acceptable. In the letter that was attached, letter of recommendation, there were six items in the general conditions that were accepted. We've had the city attorney review those. One of those, he has rejected. It's a very minor thing. It's about three words. There's another, and two is asked for clarifications on. One that was concerning both the attorney and myself involved the warranty issue. There's one piece of the warranty that's called in/out. And what that means, if should the transformer fail during its five-year warranty period and be required to be removed and shipped to the factory, they bidder wanted to limit their cost to 10% for that shipping cost and wanted that to only apply to their first year. After discussion with the engineer and the supplier, the 10% limitation is very reasonable. If this had to be shipped to their Boston factory, it'd probably cost a neighbor around 25,000. The 10% limitation would be 50,000-plus. So, financially, it's a safe bet for the city. They also agreed to extend it to the full five-year period, so that concern was waived. The only other item is there was a performance bond, which is very typical of most of your, like, road projects, building projects. It was not included in their bid, but would cost an extra 640...640...can't talk...$6,400 per year. In reviewing that, typically on these...of this, the only real labor portion is about $30,000 for installation. The rest of it is all supply of materials and shipping, which is more of a commodities-type contract. So, that could be waived. If we chose to add that on to the bid, we could do so, but it could be safely waived. We do have a good warranty, a five-year warranty, and we also have a statutory bond, which is a payment bond required by the state statutes for any contract over $100,000. So, by waiving this performance bond, we're really not giving up anything. With that, we did review this with the utility advisory committee, the first meeting on their meeting this month, and they do recommend acceptance of the bids and award. The caveat is, since we still have about two very small items open, we would like to basically the award would be with the approval of the city attorney for the contract. I have notified the bidder today, and the attorney was able to get back with me late today, and I have notified the two items that are still outstanding, and I would recommend proceeding with an award with that caveat. The award would include the option one, which is a type of monitoring equipment that matches our system. The total amount would be 542,755 dollars. The funding would be by a taxable general obligation bond, which Laura will address later. We will temporarily finance this from cash reserves, wait to sell the bonds until we've got all our contracts and then have a preferred price, so that'll be later this year. But with the taxable bonds, we don't have the some restrictions we would with a tax-exempt bond. You have to answer the questions.
Well, real quick, before we get started on questions, we're gonna see if there's anyone that's in attendance that would like to make public comments regarding new business item number one. With no one coming forward, questions for David Green regarding new business item number one?
Dave, on the different...the cost breakdown on the remove and dispose of the transformer and the breakers, is that...is that all under the same company? Is that under the same contract?
No. The only thing that's in this contract, if you look at the one item, there's three line items, or one totals out of basically transformer replacement. The only part of this contract is contract to supply and install transformer. We currently have a contract with Sega for the...basically the design, which is 20,000. We'll have to have another contract with them for construction support. The breaker, that would be a separate contract. We will still need to enter into the contract with an engineer to get those bids put together. So, this is all kind of a progressive thing. The contract for the breaker, you'll probably see that come back to you this summer. They're running at about six-month lead time. Actually, the transformers are only about six-month lead time, and we bid this out, but they're running about a year from what we heard. We've told them we still don't want this thing delivered until March, just because we don't want the warranty to kick in any sooner than it has to. The warranty is set up, it's delivered, it's 66 months from delivery or 60 months from being given service. Did I answer your question?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you.
Another question? I'd entertain a motion...
We approve new business item number one.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second winners, that we award the transformer supply and installation contract to ABB Incorporated for the Transformer Number One Replacement Project, City Project Number 1402. In the base bid, including option one, amount of 542,755 dollars, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract with ABB Incorporated, subject to the city attorney's review and approval of the contract. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? New business item number one passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. New business item number two, consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $1,050,000 to pay the cost of a transformer replacement for the city's electric utility, all pursuant to charter ordinance number 12 of the City of Gardner. Laura, welcome back to the podium.
Thanks. It's been previously determined that Transformer One and the circuit breaker and breaker controls need to be replaced. The utility advisory commission has recommended this, and council just committed to this project just now. So, since you are committed to the project, it's necessary to approve the debt financing of the overall project. As you can see, there is a financing component in that. The city financial advisor Kim provided that. As Dave said, funding for this project will be temporarily paid out of the electric fund, and the electric fund will be reimbursed for the project expenses from the proceeds of the bond. And the debt payments will also be paid from the electric fund. You had an estimate provided in here for 10 years, and those were for taxable bonds. The annual debt service payments average 121,000 a year. A very brief discussion of, if you care to hear it, of taxable bonds is taxable geodet. It's really not about the city so much. It's about investors buying your bond. Taxable means the interest that they earn from purchasing the bond is not tax exempt. It is less restrictive for the city. For example, there's no need for reimbursement concerns about timelines because there's spend-down requirements for the tax exempt kind. If we make...if we should actually make positive arbitrage because there's something to invest in that makes a little money, we can keep it. I don't know that we'll ever be able to invest anything high enough in Merton or anything. Basically, what you're doing with taxable geodet is you're issuing only under state law. It has a lot less requirements than the federal laws. So, that's very brief and high-level, and a large part of that is because when we generate and distribute electricity, because we belong to various power pools, we don't know who the end user is. And so, if you can't track private-public activity, we don't want to get involved in that. We'll just do them taxable and be safe.
Sure. Okay. At the end of your presentation, I can open the floor for public comments.
Well, basically, if you're going to...if you're committed to this project and you're gonna issue debt, you have to officially say so. That's what the rest of it is.
Okay. Well, we're just...
Okay, good.
Sure that's what we're going to do.
Good.
Is there anyone in attendance that would like to make a public comment regarding new business item number two? With no one coming forward, questions for Laura? If not, I would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 2480.
I move we adopt ordinance number 2480.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second winners, that we adopt ordinance number 2480, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $1,050,000 to pay the cost of a transformer replacement for the city's electric utility, all pursuant to charter ordinance number 12 of the City of Gardner. Freeman?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Winners?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2480 passes. Okay. New business item number three, consider an ordinance approving a revised preliminary development plan for Waverly Point. Brian, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. PDP 1402 is a revised preliminary development plan in Platte for remaining portions of land zoned RP3 of the planned garden of Park District within Waverly Point owned by Ken Rogler, Waverly 175 LLC. Little background and history here, this is the original plan. We do not have applications for those. No application for that. And we did receive applications for that in the past. The proposed project, it does include future construction of seven multifamily attached residential buildings on 32 privately-owned lots, as well as easements and rights-of-way for future infrastructure improvements. The submitted application does include a few modifications from the previous development plan, including seven fewer dwelling units, 20 feet of additional road right-of-way along 175th, and some additional setbacks and lot area variations from the city zoning regulations. These variations are acceptable as part of a planned zoning district. One of the things, we talked about 20 feet of additional right-of-way. Future improvements to 175th Street will require road widening, so this was the time to go and get that additional right-of-way. The revised development plan is part of a larger, roughly 80-acre land area previously approved by a rezoning request, and associated preliminary development plan was approved by the city council in April of 2007. At their February 24th meeting, the planning commission did hold a public hearing for the revised preliminary development plan for the 4.8-acre portion of the Waverly Point subdivision. The item was unanimously approved with all commissioners present. So, staff recommendation, we staff recommends the city council adopt ordinance number 2481, approving the revised preliminary development plan, application PDP 1402 for a 4.8-acre portion of Waverly Point subdivision.
Brian, thank you.
And the owner and applicant are here discussing this.
Very good. Public comment regarding new business item number three?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Judd Clausen with Phelps Engineering. I'm the sole engineer for the project, representing Ken and Lisa Rogler of Waverly 175. I really don't have a whole lot more to add other than what Brian had said, but as you kind of could see from the pictures of before and after, it's still the same cul-de-sac. We've got a few...we've got two fewer units. We dedicated a few...a little bit more right-of-way, and we're really just kind of... and we're really just kind of cleaning up some setbacks that were implied with the first preliminary plat, but not really well documented. So that's really the nuts and bolts of it.
Anyone have questions for the advocate or for... Brian?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Doesn't look like we're going to have any questions. I'd entertain a motion on ordinance number 2481. So move?
Second.
Motion Freeman, second winners, that we adopt ordinance number 2481, approving the revised preliminary development plan, application PDP 1402 for a 4.8-acre portion of the Waverly Point subdivision. Freeman?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Winners?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2481 passes. Just use a language for the executive session.
I move we recess into executive session to discuss personnel matters relating to non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1, beginning at 9:54, sorry, 8:54? Returning to regular session at 9:24.
Second. Motion Harrison, second, Freeman, that we adjourn into executive session. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're adjourned.
So move.
Thanks. Motion Harrison, second, Freeman, that we reopen the council meeting. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We are back in session. Do I hear a motion for executive session?
I move we recess into executive session to discuss personnel matters relating to non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1, beginning at 9:25 PM, returning to regular session at 9:40.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second, winners, that we adjourn into executive session until 9:40. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're adjourned. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're back in session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn for executive session?
I move we recess into executive session to discuss personnel matters relating to non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1, beginning at 9:44 PM, and returning to regular session at 9:54.
Second. Motion Harrison, second, Freeman, that we adjourn to executive session until 9:54. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're in recess. So, second. Motion Harrison, second, Freeman, that we resume regular city council meeting. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're back in session. Next item, consider adopting an ordinance revising the position and classification system and pay plan for 2015, ordinance number 2482. Chair?
Yes, Mayor and members of council. The item before you, want to give a little bit of an overview of the admin services manager position. The, back in December, we hired the network administrator, which was hired, and we came back to council asking that that position be moved at a level that is equivalent to the admin services manager, based on allowing us to hire someone who would manage the business disaster recovery plan that we have for the city. In the spring of last year, there were some internal discussions about the clerk position. As you are aware, the clerk is the only secretary office that a jurisdiction must have. We talked about reconfiguring that to have that report to the city administrator, which is consistent with how many of the jurisdictions throughout the metro area function. The building maintenance position was previously housed in Public Works. As we move forward with our capitol improvement programs, a lot of those projects are projects that would be managed as part of Public Works with all of the infrastructure components being together with the engineering support staff, which is more appropriate. We hired an HR supervisor. You'll recall, at budget adoption last year, we requested an HR supervisor position. It was approved with the 15 budget, and that supervisor would be able to lead the HR function. As a result, that would leave the admin services manager position, basically supervising the HR supervisor, which is redundant in our organization and is not a good use of our financial resources. So the request tonight is to eliminate the position of the admin services manager.
We do have a request to add a special events coordinator as well, on level four.
Yes.
Is that...
Yes.
We would open the floor for public comment regarding new business item number four. With no one coming forward, questions for the city administrator regarding new business item number four?
I'd like, excuse me, I'd actually like to see that we make an adjustment here with regards to the special events coordinator position. The main reason it's not part of the budget, adding the position here, we don't have it still, feels like it should be something that should be part of the upcoming budget cycle and playing for the next year's budget. You know, this one's different, but I'd like to see if we can't make an adjustment and have this only in regards to the elimination of a single position.
I would agree with Keith on that one. I'd like to see this, remove the special events coordinator, so we could talk about it in budget, as well as other positions we may need in other departments.
You will...
I'm agreeing.
Okay. Other questions? With no, none forthcoming, I would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 2482 to eliminate the administrative services manager position, but strike the special events coordinator position. Entertain a motion.
You probably need to do a motion to break them out into one item first. You got a recommendation for two items. You got consensus, but I think you probably need to take a motion on that first.
Well, could we, could we get a motion on eliminating the special events coordinator position from the business item?
Correct.
Is that, where would I word that?
Correct.
I move that we eliminate the, I could move that we remove the addition of the special events coordinator position at level four from, consider it.
Motion Freeman, second, Roberts, that we remove the special events coordinator position at level four from new business item number four and ordinance number 2482. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The special events coordinator position is being removed. Entertain a motion on adopting ordinance number 2482. So moves.
Second.
Motion Freeman, second winners, that we adopt ordinance number 2482, revising the position and classification system and pay plan for 2015. Freeman?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Winners?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2482 passes. That would be it for new business items. Council updates, does staff have anything for council?
No, Mayor.
Cheryl, anything else?
No, Mayor.
Chief? Don't leave anything for staff.
Will we have a full presentation of the salary findings, the salary study findings in a little bit more detailed fashion, other than just the PowerPoint from tonight?
The item that we would be bringing back, that we'll need some council recommendation on, is the amount that we should look for in terms of merit increase. So that's my understanding of what our consultant's going back to work on.
In the new, or in our existing structures, we're gonna go back and say these are our recommendations with the new structure.
That is, correct.
And we had budgeted $230,000 for, but we, based on her recommendation, we might not spend all $230,000 on that.
That is correct. She does not anticipate that we will need $230,000 to do that.
Well, we said that just because we budgeted, we don't have to spend it.
No, sure, and I understand that. My question's more just the findings as a whole. I'm sure they'll be presented in such a way beyond just, I think it was five slides that we had tonight. On the evaluation of where we stand, where the 93%, the 90%, the 80%, some of those things came from. I'd like to see a little bit more of those details.
Okay.
And a report that shows us exactly where that ended up. I appreciate the presentation, but it left out a lot of the details, which I'd like to see, especially from some of the things she was able to pull together in the comparison point.
Okay, I will follow up with her.
Great.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I just have one thing, and Cheryl and I talked about it this morning, but I wanted to try to get consensus from council. We've all received quite a bit of feedback about publishing agendas earlier, and so one of the things that I asked is, with the new communications person, if maybe we could publish things on the website under the date as we know about them, knowing full well that it would be in draft form until, you know, a week before the meeting, and all the supporting detail may not be available, but at least people could, would have visibility in some format to upcoming items.
Item.
And what Cheryl said is she could go back and ask to have a recommendation maybe put together, but I didn't, I just wanted to get some general consensus like that was.
You know, I, real quick, I mean, it used to be that we wouldn't get council members, we couldn't get an agenda until Friday, you know, Friday at noon, and now we get our agendas on Tuesday, and part of the reason that we didn't provide it for everybody is we want all the members of the governing body to have a chance to digest what's in the agenda in case there are questions that are posed to them. Just this year, we started providing that on Thursday afternoons instead, but I do like the idea, you know, the more advanced notice that we can give, if it's, if it's something that, now, you know, when I let everybody get lost in the weeds and just see an agenda item that we're anticipating for two meetings down the road, and you're gonna have to live with the detail that we provide at the time, but at least it gives them an idea of where we're going, and actually, council members as well.
Oh, I think that's a great idea.
We have the table on the page, if we could just have a proposed agenda item within that, it should just be with very distinct terminology that says this is proposed agenda, subject to change, but for consideration.
I think that's fair. Only thing I have, Chief, I know the fourth citizens police academy is accepting applications. Is the class filling up fast? I know the other ones have.
I think we've received six just today.
Fantastic, I think we just...
It'll be pulled within the next week.
Fantastic. Glad to hear it. All right. If there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second, Freeman, that we adjourn. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We are in adjourn. Do I hear a motion for executive session? Do I hear a motion for executive session?